And welcome to the November 25, 2024 Eugene City Council Meeting. Thank you all for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. It is good to see those of you who are in the room with us tonight. Anyone wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the access instructions listed for this meeting on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. Tonight's meeting does include a public comment period. If you wish to speak during the public comment period and have not already done so, please fill out a request to speak form that is available on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage, or one of the printed forms that's available at the entrance to this room. We'll accept those forms until 7:35. These forms will be used to generate the random order of speakers and to correctly enter speakers' names into the public record. And I'll just note, although I think we're probably going to be fine, that the public comment period is limited to 90 minutes total. And so just always encourage if a number of you are speaking on the same subject, you can be succinct, and that ensures that everybody who wants to speak will have a chance to speak tonight. Everybody has two and a half minutes. And for those folks who are joining us remotely, you are welcome to email your comments to the city council. And then as a reminder, we have a few basic rules of conduct for these meetings. No flags, signs, loud or disruptive language, noise, or any conduct that obstructs the business of council. We are seeking to create a self, a safe and respectful place for people to speak and to be heard, and so we ask your cooperation in that. And you are always welcome to wave your fingers in silent support. And then again, we do have quite a few people in the room. If you are ill, or if you've been in close contact with someone else who is ill, we encourage you to attend remotely rather than in person. And we do have masks in the hall at the table if you need one. And then just housekeeping, a final, another reminder that in case of a medical emergency, the AED is right behind the staff there under the screen. And in the case that we need to evacuate suddenly, the glass doors on the, against the window there, or the double doors in the back of the room, or the direct escape routes. So hopefully that will not be needed. And with that, I call this November 25, 2024, meeting of the Eugene City Council to order, and we'll begin with a land acknowledgement. Since time immemorial, the Kalapuea people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Kalapuea people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government, and forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapuea Ilahi. Kalapuea descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon and the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians of Oregon. They continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the And now, thank you for listening to that. And we are ready for our first item of business, which is committee reports and items of interest. And I'm assuming that Councilor Evans has, am I correct, Councilor Evans, you have a report for us? Does anyone else have an item? I know the manager has one. Okay. Councilor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a brief report. The IGR Committee will meet on Wednesday, December 4, to review and take action on the draft 2025 state priorities. The priorities document will then be shared with council at the January 15 work session for discussion and action. In previous meetings, the IGR Committee gave direction to the IGR manager to work with the chief of staff to schedule with city council a discussion on two items, including one, schedule a work session after council winter break on the position of the city to repeal House Bill 3115, and two, discuss proposed legislation that would prohibit the charging of rental application screening fees statewide. Currently, these two items are scheduled for a late January council work session. On January 28, the League of Oregon Cities will be hosting City Day at the Capitol, and if you're interested in attending, please reach out to Ethan Nelson. And that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Evans. Councilor Yeh.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share, last week I had several opportunities to hear from Greg Colburn, the co-author of Homelessness is a Housing Problem, both at the Chamber of Commerce Economic Summit and the Better Housing Together 2024 Housing Summit. I know Councilor Grove's got to hear him, and the mayor also, and maybe some other folks. But if you haven't had the opportunity to read Greg's book, it's fantastic. And I just looked it up, and the library has a copy, so you don't even have to buy it. I just wanted to share.
Thank you very much. And manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you know, as we are in the space, we're continuing to make some adjustments to your technology. Several of you have asked, since we've been in here, the desire to have your votes, as they're coming in, show on the screen. And I believe that technology has been updated by the software developer and should be in place tonight. So as you're voting, you might just check that and see if it's working. But thanks.
That's great. Thank you for that. And now I have, I do have a sort of a longish closing item. It's, November is Native American Heritage Month. And so as we come to a close, I have a little bit of a sort of historical perspective to share on some of the significant dates in November. November 18 marked the 47th anniversary of the signing of Public Law 95195, which reestablished government-to-government relations between the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians and the federal government, making it the second tribe in the nation and the first in Oregon to achieve restoration. And November 22 marked the 41st anniversary of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon's restoration of federal recognition as a tribal government, when the Grand Ron Restoration Act was signed into law. And of course, I acknowledge that in the land acknowledgement, that the CDB Gene is built on the, on the homelands known as the Kalapuea Ilahi, and that they are continued to be active and make contributions in our community. And then looking forward a month, December 29 will mark the 42nd anniversary of the restoration of the Cow Creek Band of the Umpqua Tribe of Indians. And just earlier this month, the city manager and I had the opportunity to meet with Cow Creek leadership at their tribal offices in Roseburg. And I have to say, it was inspiring. And we say in our land acknowledgement that these tribal governments, that they're so resilient, and it is just incredible when you have an opportunity to hear about what they have done and how they think about the work that they're doing to support their community. They have been doing incredible work on fire, wildlife mitigation, health and wellness, alternative energy, and energy independence. It was really inspiring to talk to them. And so it is just a moment to recognize that all three of these restorations were very significant and very hard fought, and after losing recognition as tribal entities. And so we're, we have, for the last several years, the city has an intergovernmental tribal relations team, and we have been reaching out to the five tribal governments that serve people in our area with a goal of building relationships. And as we build those relationships, finding areas, as they emerge, where we have something in common, and where partnership or collaboration, or just sharing information and sharing insights could be helpful to us all. So it has been powerful work and very encouraging, I think, of what we can do in the future. So wanting to just recognize that in this, in this month of November. And with that, I think we are ready to move on to the consent calendar.
Mayor, I move to approve items on Consent Calendar 1.
Second.
All in favor? Please vote. Let's see how this works. Got one more. Emily, did you register yours?
Yes.
Okay, that passed unanimously. Thank you. All right. Now we're on to our first item of business. This is an Action Comcast of Oregon 2, Inc., cable franchise extension. And manager, do you want to just introduce this?
Sure thing. Last week, you held a public hearing on this item, and it's an opportunity to extend our Comcast cable television franchise agreement until December 31, 2025. As I described last week, there are still unresolved issues to negotiate, unanticipated delays, including franchise consortium staff changes, and scheduling issues impacting progress. All parties, including Comcast, have agreed to this, one-year extension with a, more of a commitment to do things as quick as possible. Proposed extension only extends the term of the current franchise. All other terms and conditions remain the same, including Comcast's obligation to pay franchise fees for use of the public right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President? Put a motion on the table?
Move to approve an ordinance, excuse me, Mayor, move to approve an ordinance extending the term of ordinance number 19775 and ordinance number 20397, granted to Comcast of Oregon 2, Inc., a franchise for operating, correction, franchise for operation of a cable telecommunications system.
Second.
Please register your votes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And now we can move on to the next item of business, which is the middle housing remand. And again, I'll turn to the manager to introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the Eugene City Council is scheduled to potentially take action on an ordinance re-adopting the city's middle housing code. Following its original adoption, the middle housing code was appealed and ultimately remanded back to the city to address compliance with statewide planning goal 11, which concerns public facilities and services. The council re-adopted the middle housing code earlier this year with additional findings, but that ordinance was also remanded. In the most recent remand, the Land Use Board of Appeals explained that the city can demonstrate that the middle housing code complies with goal 11 by adopting the sufficient infrastructure language from the state's middle housing model code. The proposed ordinance addresses the remand, the one that's in front of you, by directly incorporating the sufficient infrastructure requirements from the model code to ensure that the higher-density housing allowed by this ordinance will only be developed on lots with sufficient infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Would you, Council President, put a motion on?
Mayor, move to approve an ordinance concerning middle housing, including Exhibits A and B attached thereto, as set forth in its entirety, as Attachment A to the November 25, 2024 Agenda Item Summary.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All right. We have a lineup of councils wishing to speak. Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, thank you. City Mayor, how are, City Attorney, maybe, how are we assured that there is sufficient infrastructure to serve the applicant's property? What does the applicant need to do to show, and how do they do that?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and have Lauren come up. Thanks. And Jeff, and Alyssa.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Lauren Summers, Assistant City Attorney. I'll take a stab at answering the question, and then Jeff and Alyssa can come help me out if I need help. So Councilor Zelenka, your question was, how does the city ensure that sufficient infrastructure is in place for middle housing development that would be allowed under this ordinance?
How do they do it?
Yep. Okay. So the council was provided with a memo by email at the end of last week that explains in a little bit more detail, but I can give you the highlights again. So sufficient infrastructure under the model code, so, is defined as water service, wastewater service, stormwater service, and access roads. For water service, when someone submits a building permit application to build middle housing, not a duplex, a triplex, quadplex, cottage cluster, or townhouse, Building Permit Services staff sends a referral letter to EWEB to say, can this proposed development be served with water? EWEB sends a reply back. If EWEB says no, then the building permit wouldn't be issued. For stormwater, Public Works Engineering staff has done a calculation based on the city's adopted stormwater master plan, kind of basin by basin, to see how much, how many square feet of impervious surface can be created in the basin, and the city's system can still absorb that additional stormwater runoff. And so again, when a building permit application comes in, public work staff does that calculation. And if there's no additional impervious surface area, then the development would either need to retain all the stormwater on site, or would not be issued a building permit. For wastewater, the city has a wastewater modeling system. So again, public work staff can model how the proposed development will impact the wastewater system. And for access, the applicant needs to show that the development site has access to public or private streets that either comply with the city's street design standards or the fire code, so that there's sufficient access.
So each one of those separately assures that each one of those four infrastructure pieces, there's sufficient infrastructure to serve that particular lot?
That's correct.
And of course, you just explained them in summary, but there is a whole slew of details about how that actually occurs in real life. And we don't typically put those kind of implementation details into ordinance. How are people going to, where do those, where do those implementation details, operational things like operational manuals, where do they live? How do they get perpetuated? So 10 years from now, we're doing the same thing.
That'll be a little bit of a question for Building Permit Services staff. That's a little bit outside of my expertise. But you're right, that that's a level of detail that doesn't typically live in the city code and is not included in the ordinance.
We'd have the world's longest code if we put all our, we already do, but...
So those would be internal processes, those are adopted manuals. That is something that, my understanding is, Building Permit Services staff is having conversations with applicants right now, because while our, the city's ordinance is on remand, they have been applying the model code, including those sufficient infrastructure requirements. And so they are working through that system right now with applicants under the model code. And if the council were to adopt the ordinance in front of you tonight, then those same requirements would be transferred into the Eugene code.
We'll have, we'll have figured out all those implementation details, but they won't be necessarily in the ordinance.
Right, right.
And so this particular issue about sufficient infrastructure, is it basically the same as the minimum requirement?
So the sufficient infrastructure requirements that are included in the ordinance before you tonight come directly from the model code, which is what the state requires cities who have not adopted their own middle housing codes to implement. So we're taking state-required standards and moving them directly into the Eugene code.
That's basically the minimum state requirement?
Yep.
Yeah. On a bigger scale, not that particular issue, what's the difference between the minimum state requirement that was proposed by DLCD and what the city is proposing? So what are we doing differently that's from the minimum state requirements?
In terms of the ordinance in its entirety?
Oh, yes.
I'm going to ask Jeff to come up and speak to that.
Thanks for the question, Councilor Zelenka. Jeff Kepfer, Senior Planner. So the, just to be clear, there's, there's three kind of things that we're talking about here. There's the minimum standards, there's the state model code, and then there's Eugene's middle housing code, right? So I just want to make sure that we're going to talk right now about the minimum standards, which is what a lot of the testimony is referencing. And then we're going to talk about Eugene's one, so I'm going to set the state model code over there. So the minimum standards, the way that we foundationally are different is that we allow middle housing on more lots throughout Eugene. So just as an example, for a cottage cluster, say, in the minimum standards, it's only required to go on a lot that is 7,000 square feet, rather than Eugene's middle housing code, which allows it on a lot that's 4,500 square feet. So that's where we, you know, following the public engagement and everything else to kind of deal with our housing shortage, went above and beyond as in our code to allow more middle housing in more places. Other areas that were different is that we included incentives within the middle housing code. So that was things like, if you're going to do guaranteed and affordable housing, so income-qualified housing, you got to benefit for that. But other, there's a lot of ways that we are consistent with the minimum standard, such as our building height, our, we went a little bit further in lot coverage, minimum standard would be 50%, we went 60%. But generally speaking, it's the lot area and how many lots in Eugene we're allowing middle housing to go on. That was the functional difference.
So little more dense in certain circumstances, and incentives are the major difference.
That's, in summary, yeah.
Why didn't this, the DLCD environment have incentives in it?
I can't necessarily speak for the state, but I think, you know, the state was trying to balance something that could be applied generally across the board, and they didn't want to assume intent for anybody. So in that same way, Eugene's model code offers a lot of flexibility through adjustment regi- reviews, which is a standard that we're really used to, right? It's something built into Eugene's code to offer flexibility when you might have a unique design. The state model code doesn't do that, because they just can't assume that cities want to do that, right? So they just kind of said, we're going to set a line here, and that's what you're going to meet.
We've been doing that for a very long time.
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I think you should sit down, though.
Councillor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, do we have an idea on how many staff hours we have wrapped into House Bill 2001, CFAC, appeals, remands, et cetera?
A lot.
And cost?
Yeah, we don't, we don't track by, I don't think we're tracking that by, you're working on 2001 or you're working on this, but essentially, you know, a lot of our planning staff have been working on these state mandates for the last handful of years.
And if we had just adopted the model code, we would have been done a long time ago, is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that.
So, adopting the model code was one option that the city could have gone with. I think the thing that I want to stress is that we are doing the, the hard work now. Yes, there's a lot of staff hours going into this, but in implementing the model code, one of the things that we, we aren't really servicing the community in that it's confusing. So, our staff is having to navigate for everybody else the fact that we are using a code that doesn't exist locally. So we're having to educate and constantly walk people through the fact that, and this is, I mean, I'm just kind of reiterating a lot of the stuff that we hear from the public, when they're coming into our counter and saying, okay, well, I want to do this type of middle housing, I looked at your land use code, I didn't see that, oh, how do I do this, what do I do? And staff is then going to have to dedicate that time over the long run of implementing that model code over a long period of time. So it's that question of like, do we want the model, the Eugene code that helps and streamlines housing production in Eugene, or do we want to implement the model code and just continue the effort of educating and bringing people to use a code that exists at the state level?
Thank you. My concern is that we are not getting to other important planning issues, such as the health overlay zone, the Bethel area plan, the list goes on. Although it doesn't involve planning staff, we're still waiting to finish up the fire governance model as well. So, we have these important issues that are staring us in the face, and we are still dealing with remands and appeals, and there's probably going to be more, depending on how we vote tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I agree with my colleague, Councillor Groves, in his sentiments on this. I'm torn on this question. I'm, I'm deeply torn, because on one hand, I want to put anything into code that's legal and possible to see us build more housing, for the love of all, get out. We desperately need to build more housing. I, I'm going to be a lot louder about that this year, and us incentivizing anything we can to do it. That leads me to a place where, I doubt this will be remanded a fourth time, but I, I kind of want to vote in favor of it, because I figure since it's got the model code language right in there, it's probably going to be okay. The challenge I have with that is, having read the memo, and thank you very much for that, I found that the language of that memo didn't answer the question for me. How do they define, in, in, in an environment where we expect objective standards and measures for things, when it talks about wastewater being essentially put into an algorithm to see if it will work, I, there wasn't as clear and objective enough language for me with how we measure and what's, what the standard is for sufficiency. So someone could know in advance, before they bought, for example, a piece of property, would they have the capacity to do the plans they have for it, because they can easily tell in a, in a clear and objective manner, what's the standard for whether or not it will meet code? So, I'm, I have voted in the past three instances, I think, of this coming before us, in, against it, because I had concerns with goal 11 in the sense that we don't have clear and objective measures for what is sufficient infrastructure, and I don't have a way to tell whether or not we do. So, I'm, I'm still not sure at this moment how I will vote, but I'm torn. So, thank you for all of the information you've given us over time on this.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we have a motion on the table right now, but we had two other options here. One was to approve this ordinance with specific modifications, as determined by this council. And the third option was for us to take no action. Can you tell me what the effect would be if we took no action? Would that automatically mean that the state standards would kick in, and, you know, we wouldn't take a formal, quote unquote, position on this?
So, Councillor Evans, if the council does not adopt the remand ordinance that's in front of you, then staff will continue to apply the model code, which is what they've been doing during the period of the remand, so since August 1st through now. So if we don't have our own adopted code, they'll apply the model code.
I'm sorry. So basically, you know, we would still be going down the same route as the state is going, and my opposition to this in the first place, five years ago, when I was president of a League of Oregon Cities, is we need to maintain as much home rule and control as we can. And, you know, while this code may work and fit for Portland Metro, it doesn't necessarily fit for the rest of the state. So, you know, my preference in this case would be to, to, you know, make a, oh, God, I'm losing, I'm, I'm losing, I'm sorry. Well, yeah, either vote no, or to just take no action. And I, I, you know, I have been, I remember when we first had to deal with this issue five years ago, or four years ago, I, they all run together with me right now, but that's what happens when you turn 64. So, anyway, this council voted seven to zero to one against the provisions in the House Bill 2001. And then people were convinced to revisit their vote in opposition to it then. That's our, that's our, our prerogative. However, I just, I, I'm, you know, I'm like Councillor, you know, Clark, I have a real, you know, difficult time wrapping my head around and giving away our ability to zone and to, you know, manage our local, you know, housing codes to the state. This is the state of Oregon, not the state of Portland.
Okay, Councillor Zelenka, another round?
Yeah, well, I'm a little confused by that, Greg, because if you adopt the, the minimum state standard, that is the Portland-centric code that the state said they shall do this. And, and if we adopt the attached ordinance, that's the one that's been crafted with public input and, and staff input to more Eugene-ize the Portland code, if you will, which I agree with, that's what it basically is, which is why we all voted not to go for, or not to endorse measure 2001. So what is it, what's the benefit to Eugene by adopting the, the proposed code as opposed to adopting the minimum code? Why did we even do our own code if, if the minimum code's just fine?
So, I'll take a stab and then let Jeff answer the question as well, but I think that what the city wanted to do was to create the possibility for local involvement, local input, citizen engagement, and, you know, we have these middle housing directives from the state, we have to allow middle housing in the city of Eugene.
Yeah, we know the choice.
But there is some opportunity to craft an ordinance that works for the city of Eugene, rather than just kind of adopting in whole the ordinance that, or the code that was drafted by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So, city staff spent a lot of time and a lot of energy, and a lot of members of the community spent a lot of time and a lot of energy, kind of working on building a code that seemed like it would work best for the city of Eugene, and that fit well within the city of Eugene's existing land use code. So it wasn't sort of two different documents that staff and applicants were having to work back and forth between, that we could kind of put those requirements, hopefully seamlessly, into the Eugene code. That, the ordinance before you tonight is staff's best stab at doing all of those things and complying with statewide planning goal 11. And in order to do that, we have imported directly one requirement from the model code drafted by DLCD, which is the sufficient infrastructure requirement that we've been talking about. If council doesn't take action, middle housing will still be allowed in the city of Eugene, it will still be approved, but it will be approved under the code adopted by the state, not the code that has been kind of worked on by this council, by the citizens, by a lot of folks who care a lot in the city of Eugene.
I'm going to jump in there, sorry, Jeff, because I want to make it really, that was a very elegant answer, but it still came away as sounding like staff has been doing this. We've actually, you have directed us every step of the way, that you didn't want to do the model code, that you did want to make every decision that's built into that code was a council decision. So, what we're continuing to do is bring you back, you know, what we think is the best fit for your decision, it's been remanded twice, you know, we've been told, if you want it to not be remanded again, not that it won't be appealed, but that we need to adopt that model code language as an option, and that's what we've done for that specific case. But I think, when you ask, what is the benefit, I think that's a conversation that, that you've been having together in making those choices.
So, the, Jeff, you were going to say, you were going to say something?
I mean, I, if I can just add, the, you know, we've talked about the incentives that aren't there, the, the streamlining, the efficiency that's built in. There are other council directions that were provided to us to, you know, if we were to apply the, the model code, the maximum building height is 35 feet. The council directed us to take that down to 30. So right now, we are implementing a building height that's higher, we're implementing a lot coverage that's higher, we're implementing setbacks that are smaller, that's through the model code. So like, while we did go farther in some areas, I just wanted to highlight that we did also provide context for Eugene and the way that our, our city has grown over time, and that was, as City Manager just said, the direction of the council.
Yeah, right. I appreciate what the City Manager said about responding to council direction to bring back an ordinance that reflected what we were saying, and I totally appreciate that. I just wanted to underscore one more thing, which is that there's, there's an option to take, take no action, but take no action doesn't mean middle housing ordinance goes away, and we do away with HB 20, 2001. That mandate is from the state, we have to do that. The take no action just institutes the code that is the minimum state code that DLCD came put together, that is basically, I think, a Portland code, that, and instead of one that our community worked on and our council worked on and put together, and albeit with the sufficient infrastructure being identical to the minimum code. So, in that case, I, I'd rather have a code that we worked on that fits better within our system, that, that has the things that Jeff was talking about, as opposed to just adopting what they thought was great for Portland.
Thank you. Councillor Clark, did you take yourself out of the queue?
I did.
Okay, okay. So, I think we're ready for a vote, but I just do want to say one thing here, which is, following on what Jeff Gepper said about the complexity of now responding to model code because it's not clear, this council has a priority of addressing housing needs. Middle housing is one of those ways we hope to address some of our housing needs. You included incentives so that some of that housing could be more affordable, which wasn't included in the model code at all. And the idea here is that it's a clear, streamlined, customized code that works for our community, and so, in the immediate term, should help streamline the construction of that housing that we so desperately need. So, that's my first point. My second point is, this question of sufficient infrastructure, as I am understanding the explanation, and as I understand how this city functions, is part of the day-to-day function of, that happens in this city and has happened for years. This is not new, and there is no evidence that we have that the city has failed to do this at any point, permit construction that has insufficient infrastructure. So I just think, the evidence is right before you in terms of this city, as it builds, is not overtaxing its infrastructure, it is growing appropriately. So there's no, it seems to me, there's no more evidence that one needs, we have a process for doing it, it has worked, it continues to work. This is a inserting language, important language into this code, but it doesn't actually, we're not having to do something new or different, we actually do this work already, and there's no evidence it not worked. And then the final thing is, I think it's really, really important to recognize that this city was awarded for the extent of public engagement that was involved in passing this middle housing code, and to turn around two years later and to suggest that, that that doesn't matter anymore, it seems to me a violation of trust. And so I would just say this was an incredible accomplishment that this city did to go through and create this code, and I would encourage the council to proceed, accept these, vote in support of these changes, and allow this very, very good middle code, middle housing code to stand as improved. So with that, I think we're ready for a vote, so please register your votes. Okay, so it looks like that is one, two, three, four, five, yes, and three, no, so that passes. Thank you all very much. And now we're on to our final action here, the interim appointment to the civilian review board. And Manager, do you want to introduce that?
The civilian review board has a vacancy to fill due to a resignation in September. The police auditor's office worked with City Manager's office staff to hold a special recruitment cycle, generating five eligible candidates. The mayor worked with the police auditor to appoint a community review panel who ranked the candidates and forwarded their recommendations to council in October. The council may move to appoint the top candidate, move to appoint another candidate, or move to have candidates give statements before council before making the appointment. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Turn to Council President to put a motion on the table.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, because I've got them in alphabetical order, the, oh, okay, thank you, good, got it, thank you. Mayor, I'm going to move to appoint Noah Kuhn to the civilian review board, beginning November 26, 2024, to fill an unexpired term ending on June 30, 2025.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that? Please register your votes. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much, and congratulations, Noah Kuhn, for your appointment. And with that, we are ready for the public comment period. Thank you all for your patience. The public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official. And with that, I'll ask Chair to post the list of speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. We have 21 speakers this-
We have 21 speakers this evening. I will announce two speakers' names at a time. When you are called to speak, please state your name and your ward or neighborhood, if known, before beginning your comments. If you are announced as the next speaker, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please leave any bags you have with you, you may have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give council, please place them in the basket near the podium. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have 15 seconds remaining to speak. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that the use of profanity is prohibited and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. Our first speakers this evening are Lynn Woodrich, followed by Jess Ludwig.
My name is Lynn Woodrich. I'm the active Bethel community co-chair. I've lived in the Bethel area over 30 years. I live in Ward Eight. I'm speaking for the active Bethel community board. Thank you for hearing us and withdrawing the zoning verification decision for the USD Clean Fuels Facility in the Trainsong neighborhood. We understand that you have 90 days to review it, but we ask Sarah Madera to withdraw permanently. The 90 days is up on January 16th. Trainsong residents sent a letter to Sarah asking her to meet and visit the area, and they're waiting for her to get back to them with the time and date. The USD Clean Fuels Rail to Tanker Truck Transfer Facility proposed location in the already burdened Trainsong neighborhood on Bethel Drive needs to move further north so that it can be accessed through an established industrial area away from residential areas. If there was an explosion at their proposed site, besides killing the residents, it could take out the nearby emergency services and public works. Please hurry to finalize the public health development standards for at least the Bethel and Trainsong neighborhoods so we won't be saddled with another J.H. Baxter-type business in our area. Until the city manager provides you with the health overlay zone language to review, there's nothing to act on. Why am I not seeing this on your work session agenda? We need to get ahead of heavy industrial permit requests for the Westgate Industrial Park on North Danabow Avenue and others are in the pipeline that we're unaware of. A few more things per local business owners that you can do now to help with some of the unhoused problems are to enact a no panhandling ordinance for Eugene and to require metal recyclers to have a contractor's license to turn in scrap wire and copper. And why aren't you enforcing legal camping codes on Highway 99 from Roosevelt to Beltline? Bethel needs a police substation on Highway 99 now. It doesn't need to be fancy. The city hired a downtown incident commander in 2023 to focus on public safety and cleanliness, ensuring appropriate police presence and coordinating resources from across the organization in a rapid response team. Bethel needs this too. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next speakers are Jess Ludwig, followed by KG.
Hi there. I'm Major Venice City Council and City Manager Madera. My name is Jess Ludwig and I'm an environmental science student at UO and an organizer with Climate Justice League, as well as a volunteer with Fossil for Eugene. I'm also a Eugene resident living in Ward Two. I don't have too much written, but I wanted to voice my support for renewable energy and urge city council to prioritize climate, energy justice, and public health by moving to direct city staff to draft ordinance language to increase the gas supplier tax on Northwest Natural from 5% to 10% and use the additional revenue to support the electrification and weatherization of low-income homes in the city. There is now an even greater need for local revenue generation for climate action, and I encourage council to move quickly to close the existing funding gap so that the increase to the gas supplier tax can be held for the exclusive purpose of supporting household transitions to high-efficiency electric alternative. Last summer had some of the most hot days on record, and as an avid outdoors woman who relies on being in the forests and rivers of Oregon for my job, I'm increasingly concerned and scared, especially with the wildfires and smoke. I just saw the Eugene's climate recovery ordinance and read that the city committed to reducing community-wide fossil fuel use by 50% by 2030, as well as community-wide GHD emissions reductions around 7.6% annually, and have also adopted the goal of full building decarbonization by 2045. Currently, council is not on track to meet any of these commitments. While this is super disappointing, we can create change. I again urge you all to take swift action in support of the future of our people and our planet. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jess. As a reminder to the next speakers, when I call you as next speaker, it would be great if you could sit in that front row seat designated for the next speaker. Our next speakers are KG, followed by Micah Anton.
My name is KG. I'm here with Equitable Access Eugene to advocate for plant medicines in our city. I'm going to speak about plant medicines and their impact on my mental health. And I want to cover plant medicines' effects on two aspects of my mental health. The first is my experience with clinical depression, and the second is with its effects on my Tourette's Syndrome. Though it's important to mention, TS is not a mental health condition, but the constants there is and misunderstandings plus discrimination that arise from it do contribute to mental health problems. I had diagnosed clinical depression for as long as I could remember. I tried medications and therapy for a long time. They did treat the symptoms, but not the cause. Plant medicine treated the cause, and I have not experienced the day of depression since for several years now. I noticed too that my tics, which are tics are the uncontrolled actions caused by TS, had gone down a substantial amount immediately after that plant medicine-based therapy, by as much as 90%. And I could do something like go to the store, buy something, walk out, not have to worry about having a tic, or how that might be reacted to, or go to work without having a tic. Someone with TS having access could be a game changer. With depression, it already has been. Please allow equitable access to these plant medicines. Thank you.
Could you say what ward you live in? Sorry, I didn't.
I'm not sure which ward I live in.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, KG. Our next speakers are Micah Anton, followed by Tiffany Edwards.
Mayor Venice and Eugene City Council, my name is Micah and I live in Ward Two. I'm an active member of the community here in Eugene, working and volunteering in advocacy and the arts. As a young person, my life has been shaped by the many crises that have come to a head during my adult life. I've been weighed down by the rapidly rising cost of living and I've struggled with the difficulty of finding employment. As I look towards my future, I'm daunted by the prospect of ever worsening climate change. The climate crisis is already here, and I've witnessed the devastating impacts of climate-driven heat waves and natural disasters. As greenhouse gases continue to rise, I can only imagine what the coming decades will look like. I'm here to ask you to take action for economic and climate justice. As we anticipate another Trump administration, the future of federal funding for climate seems grim. It's more important than ever that we take action on a local level to ensure that we have the resources we need for a just energy transition. I ask that you increase the gas supplier tax on Northwest Naturals from 5 to 10% and use the revenue generated by this to increase support for the, to increase support for the electrification of low-income households. The listening sessions that the city held on decarbonization showed support across the board for electrification incentives and rebates. We need to have a way to generate revenue in order to move forwards with such electrification programs. I recognize that this ask comes in the contest, context of an existing citywide budget deficit, and I encourage you all to act quickly to close that budget gap so your focus can be on proactive work and so that any increase in the gas supplier tax can get directly to supporting the electrification in income, in low-income households. Planning locally for a just energy transition is necessary to make sure no one is left behind in the transition to clean energy. It's also a needed step for the city of Eugene to take to do its part in combating climate change. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Micah. Our next speakers are Tiffany Edwards, followed by Dawn Scott.
Evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Tiffany Edwards with the Eugene Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for your thoughtful, thoughtful deliberations last week on the proposed fire protection fee. That said, a few of you asked that I come back and address the council with some points of clarification on our position and our biggest concerns as you go into deliberations over the next few weeks. Our intention is to be helpful and continue to engage in the conversation. One of the biggest concerns we hear is around the transparency of the fee and what it will be paying for. By labeling this a fire protection fee, the public is likely to misunderstand its purpose. Many will assume it represents $10 million in new investment in fire and emergency services. We know that is not the case. With $8 million of the revenue intended to fill a deficit in the general fund, and only $2 million will go to enhanced fire services. As proposed, we fear residents and businesses will expect improvements in fire services that simply aren't resourced with this fee, leaving Eugene Fire challenged with justifying why these enhancements haven't materialized. Second, we believe this approach misses an opportunity to address the root causes in our general fund shortfall. Without a clear evaluation of which departments or programs are underperforming, not aligned with revenues, or less a priority if the public were asked to choose, we risk creating a cycle of short-term fixes without solving the underlying issues. In two years, we'll likely face the same budget crisis compounded by other funding needs. Many residents aren't paying close attention to this proposal. However, they will notice a new fee on their eWeb bill and feel confused or frustrated when they realize what it's for. Looking ahead when the CSI renewal comes up, this confusion could deepen. Voters might question why additional public safety funding is necessary after what they perceive as a $10 million investment in emergency services and vote it down. Then what? If the council determines that a fee is the right path forward, I urge you to consider renaming it. A city service fee would be more accurately reflect its purpose and help set appropriate expectations for the community. We'd also like to see some commitment to engage the community in a priority-based budgeting process to help identify and focus resources on what matters most. Transparency and clear communication are essential for maintaining public trust. Missteps now could make it harder to gain support for future needs. Thank you for giving this proposal some further consideration.
Thank you, Tiffany. Our next speakers are Dawn Scott, followed by Josh Easterland.
Council members, I'm here to discuss the citizen concerns about the Golden Garden Sports Complex. My name is Dawn Scott. I live in Ward Six. We bought a home near the park in November of 2022, and the public involvement process began in 2023. The current concept presents an expansive set of outdoor athletic fields for soccer, softball, and many other activities, enhancing with regional and even statewide tournaments, and may in fact have several staff members to sell and manage the facility. We've been told until recently that it was too early in the planning process to discuss sound and lighting studies. We have finally been advised upon pressing on those issues that there are no requirements for either a noise or a lighting study for this development as they are not required by city code. There will likely be a public address system within the park for the various venues, and there will obviously be significant field lighting as well. There will be noise from this public address city, systems, audiences in two seating areas, horns honking, field lights, and more for what could be several days of the week for many weeks of the year, especially if toxic astroturf is applied so the playing season can be extended. All of this is being dropped into a quiet residential area with an existing carefully-developed natural area that is home to an endangered western pond population, turtle population, as well as a popular area for a variety of birds and other wildlife. This can dramatically diminish the quality of life in the Eugene neighborhood. Sporting and economic interests are strong advocates for this complex. The neighbors conversely have no power base to operate from and have been delayed in dealing with their concerns until it is perceived as by some to be too late. This is disappointing and I find unacceptable. I believe noise and lighting studies, although not required, should be conducted to evaluate how these factors will affect the residents and the wildlife in and around the sports complex and that a full EIS might be in order. I hadn't had a whole lot of time to organize this with my neighbors, but I will say that there are some people that will be standing behind me at this point who have expressed a similar concern to mine as to the quality of life and the ecosystem in this area that has the park development in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Our next speakers are Josh Easterland, followed by Brett Deeden.
Hi, city councilors. I'm Josh Easterland with Equitable Access Eugene, hoping to decriminalize the ability to grow, gather, and give psychedelic plants and fungi here in the city. I appreciate you taking the time to have the work session on the mental health and addiction crisis going on in our city. And the benefits of psychedelic plants and fungi are just continued to roll out in the clinical trials that we're seeing nationally at the, you know, the levels. And, and while the psilocybin services initiative that came out and legalized psilocybin services for people, you know, our citizens here in the city, is a great first step, it's just not really accessible to everybody. It's cost at least $1,000 per session, which I personally wouldn't be able to afford for a one, one-time treatment. And so, you know, I believe that having the community, you know, grown support of people being able to access these substances in, you know, safe, supportive ways without paying these insane, you know, very expensive fees is going to allow for the benefits to spread further and more people to treat their mental health conditions and, and whatnot. So I was just hoping, you know, in the future to have some time to chat with some of you one-on-one, some of you I haven't spoken with yet. I actually have a few books here for Councilman Clark Groves, Zelenka and Evans, which have a letter also with my, with our website and my contact info, and I'd love to even just have five minutes of your time to chat and, you know, kind of explain this in more than, in a short few minutes. So thank you for your time and take care.
Thank you, Josh. Our next speakers are Brett Deeden, followed by Gino Poveroso.
Good evening, councilors, city mayor, city manager. My name is Brett Deeden. I'm here tonight as a representative of the Lane Professional Firefighters Union, Local 851. So I want to address a statistic that's been repeated often. Our response times have increased from four minutes to seven minutes. And why this is concerning? Let me remind everyone that we are community's first responders for both fire and emergency medical services. Every second counts when saving lives and property. You know why the national standard for response times is set at four minutes? There's two reasons primarily. First, fire grows at alarming rate. A bedroom fire can grow with a small match to an entire room to be engulfed in flames with temperatures exceeding 1,000 degrees in five minutes. That's how quickly a fire can get out of control. Now, two is severe brain injuries. When oxygen stops flowing to the brain, we have four minutes to act to prevent severe brain damage and potentially save a life. These are just two examples. We haven't even touched on the critical response times needed for major traumas, structural collapses, hazmat situations, strokes, fast-moving wildfires, overdoses, childbirth complications, and more. I understand the budget and funding challenges you face. I'm here to say there is another option for firing EMS services, a path forward that requires your leadership. We need you back at the table to advance our governance structure. We have waited too long and public safety is in danger. As our union president, Chrissy Wirtz, said last week, we are tired, we are burnt out, we need help. I love this job, and I can speak for a lot of others in this room, that we love our job. We love what we do. But we can't be, we can't keep running ragged, asked to do more and more with fewer and fewer resources. So I want to end tonight with an invitation. I invite each and every one of you to join us for a shift. You can take a couple shifts if you want. Bring your own bedding, your own toiletries, we'll provide the meals. But I want you to experience firsthand what it's like to respond to emergency calls in the community we both serve. It may help you realize the urgency of working together to find a long-term solution for a fragile firefighter system. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Our next speakers are Gino Poveroso, followed by Jim New.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Gino Poveroso and I live in Ward Three. I'm here tonight as a University of Oregon student, a local kitchen worker, and a community volunteer. My story in Eugene is one shared by many. I've grown up and continue to live in rental housing where I've had little control over the appliances that impact my daily life and health. Every day I work, I stand over gas stoves and grills, directly experiencing the health impacts that many of
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Gino Poverosa, and I live in Ward Three. I'm here tonight as a University of Oregon student, a local kitchen worker, and a community volunteer. My story in Eugene is one shared by many. I've grown up and continue to live in rental housing where I've had little control over the appliances that impact my daily life and health. Every day I work, I stand over gas stoves and grills directly experiencing the health impacts that many of us in the food industry face. The exposure to nitrogen dioxide and other harmful gases doesn't end with my shift. It continues at home where, as a renter, I have no say over the appliances that affect my health. This is the reality for so many of Eugene residents who work in restaurants, keeping our local economy running with, while facing double exposure to these health risks, both at work and at home. We've seen unprecedented heat waves and climate impacts affecting our community. As someone who works in hot kitchens, I've experienced firsthand how these challenges are magnified for working people and create hazardous situations. Eugene has the opportunity to be a leader in protecting workers like me and yourselves. While we serve food in your restaurants, study at the universities, and contribute to our vibrant local economy, we need our city to take meaningful action to protect our health and future. Increasing the gas supplier tax on Northwest Natural from 5% to 10% to fund low-income residential electrification will be a concrete step towards supporting our community's most vulnerable residents. This isn't just about climate policy, it's about protecting the health and well-being of Eugene's working families who have been bearing the burden of these choices for far too long. I urge you to listen to the voices of people who are disproportionately affected by your decisions. Show us that Eugene truly cares about its working community that allows our city to function and thrive by making the, by making decisions that protect our health and future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gino. Our next speakers are Jim New, followed by Virginia Donahue.
Mayor, council, and city manager, my name is Jim New. I live in Ward Seven. When being asked what efforts people who care about supporting energy transition should take the next four years, Catherine Hayhoe, an atmospheric scientist and author at Texas Tech University, stated, "We should recognize that the situation is dire, and on many fronts it's getting worse. The next four years, we need to lean into collaborations, partnerships, and solutions that have multiple wins for both people and planet. One group may advocate for a health benefit, others an economic benefit, and others a benefit for nature. For too long, we have worked in silos, but now we don't have time for single wins. We need multiple wins. We need partners that are in it for multiple reasons, and the more we focus on working together, the more positive outcomes we'll see, the more allies we'll gain, especially at the local and regional levels." Council gave staff direction to poll businesses, organizations, and the public on the best means to decarbonize, and the results were fund, incentives, fuel switching, and weatherization. In light of the two upcoming work sessions on electrification, I urge council to direct staff to draft an ordinance to generate local revenue for low-income residential electrification by increasing a gas supply tax from 5% to 10% and create a social cost for carbon. Establish a low nitrogen oxide emission standard for gas appliances, and prohibit the expansion of gas mains within the city's right-of-way. Please collaborate, partner, create a positive solution, as there is no time for single wins. And lastly, I'd like to thank the mayor and council simple for your years of community service. I will not be at the next council meeting, and for your service and efforts. It has been a pleasure working with you both. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Our next speakers are Virginia Donahue, followed by Andrew Higginson.
My name is Virginia Donahue. My husband and I live in Ward Two. I am wearing my Raging Granny vest to add credibility to my remarks and to show my concern for many issues facing our world today. But today, the issue is close to home and personal. Our son has been with Eugene Springfield Fire and Rescue for over 20 years and is now a captain of one of the stations. His dedication to this crucial job is second to none. We have all seen the charts and read the shocking statistics that show the unreasonable demands being placed on our firefighters and EMTs. The one that disturbs me the most is that of, the people hired in the past 10 years, 47% have quit, most to work in other cities where the workload is more humane and the pay is better. That's nearly 50%. No wonder we have watched our son grow ever more exhausted with each passing year. The first half of this month, he worked two 120-hour weeks, back-to-back, because of forced overtime, with little chance for healthy sleep, to recover the physical, mental, and emotional strength needed to answer the continual calls for help. He is not alone in bearing this heavy, unrelenting burden. For all our sakes, we citizens of Eugene must be willing to help our helpers. However, I am concerned that the name of the proposed method of raising money is not quite honest. By attaching the label "fire fee," it sounds as if the fire department will receive all the money, when in fact, 80% of it will go to the city's general fund. I worry that the public will lose trust in city government if you are not transparent in how the money will be allocated. I do not oppose the fee as such. Eugene is a fantastic place to live, with parks, police, libraries, and other services all needing our support. Why not call it "Lucky to Live Here" Fee, and then continue to do the budget work needed to properly and honestly fund our fire department? Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia.
No song to dance.
Our next speakers are Andrew Higginson, followed by Tim Rogers.
Good evening, councilors, mayor, city manager. My name is Andrew Higginson, and I am a Eugene resident, Ward Eight, and a firefighter paramedic for Eugene Springfield Fire. As our city faces a challenging budget shortfall and seeks to define our financial priorities moving forward, I am here to urge the city council to prioritize an investment in the safety and security that our community needs. We know the statistics, that staffing and emergency apparatus have not matched the pace of our population growth, that consequently, response times have nearly doubled since the 1990s, that frequently, all of our available ambulances are busy, leaving our community members without the essential safety net that they both expect and deserve. Essential is the key word here, and our budget priorities should reflect the vital importance of the services the fire department provides. Public health and safety is a foundational component of what makes a city livable and what makes a community thrive. As a resident, I do enjoy many of the services that the city currently provides. I enjoy those aspects of living in Eugene, but I need fire protection and emergency medical services. Tomorrow, I'll be working on an ambulance, and experience suggests there will likely be a time in which every medic unit will be committed to a call. During those times, I worry. I worry that a fellow community member will need us, that a friend or a loved one will need us, and we won't be able to get there quickly enough. If a neighbor's house catches fire, if a friend is involved in a car accident, if my wife or son suffers a catastrophic medical emergency, I need to know that we have prioritized the resources necessary to ensure a rapid and effective response. Going forward, please reevaluate the current budgetary structure, and please prioritize the safety and security of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next speakers are Tim Rogers, followed by John Williams.
Good evening. My name is Tim Rogers. I live in Ward Seven. I'm an engineer/paramedic with Eugene Springfield Fire. I've served this department for nearly eight years, and I'm currently assigned to Station One, which houses the busiest fire engine in Eugene Springfield. Engine One is also ranked among the top 20 busiest fire engines in the nation. I want to take this opportunity to explain why we are urging you to prioritize investments in our fire department. Throughout my career, I have witnessed firsthand the devastating effects of chronic exhaustion on our firefighters. I have seen colleagues fall asleep while trying to eat, while waiting for their partners to offload patients at the hospital, and even while en route to emergency calls. On one occasion, while transporting a patient, I saw the driver of the ambulance struggle to stay awake, holding his eyelids open with the windows down and the radio blasting just to avoid dozing off at the wheel. We often, we're often told, speak up when we're too exhausted to continue. But what happens then? Another firefighter must step in to endure the same working conditions, perpetuating the cycle of exhaustion caused by insufficient resources? From 1981 to last year, there has been a 1,003.6% increase in calls for service. Yet, in over four decades, the number of response units remained unchanged at 12. It's time to make significant investments in our fire department. Investments that include increasing response resources, retaining firefighters with competitive wages, and developing a long-term funding plan to meet the demands of our community. Additionally, if we are going to ask our members to perform advanced medical procedures such as surgical criques, pleural decompression, endotracheal innovation, we must ensure they are in the physical and mental condition necessary to execute these lifesaving interventions. We need help. We've been asking for help. No one wants the loss of a firefighter or loved one to be the wake-up call for action. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Our next speakers are John Williams, followed by Robert W. Baker.
Hello, city councilors. My name is John Williams, Ward Seven, mental health care worker and associate director of Equitable Access Eugene. First, I want to thank you for taking this urgent matter of mental health and substances used to task in your work session. Psychedelic plant medicines are clinically promising in treating a variety of neurological diseases, including chemical dependency and other mental health challenges. Before I began advocating for more equitable access to these plants, I personally witnessed psilocybin success in treating the treatment-resistant cluster headaches that had doctors stumped, deep depressions that available pharmaceuticals couldn't touch. In our community, I've met engaged citizens across demographics who use frequent, repeated microdoses of psilocybin for symptom management, from nicotine cravings to early-stage Alzheimer's, or they did before the replacement of Measure 110. These doses are subperceptible, meaning no trip, no high. So this practice is not the focus of the Psilocybin Services Center Measure 109. So it is in effect now a criminalized wellness practice. Speaking of the Measure 110 overhaul, as Councilor Keating mentioned, just last week, our police department was recognized by the Oregon Peace Officers Association for their exceptionalism in lifesaving and public service, plus other areas. This relationship that these men and women have developed with the civilian community improves quality of life across the city's wards. It's built on the health and safety-driven policy that these outstanding professionals enforce. It's worth maintaining with a resolution that tailors sweeping statewide change to our local needs. Psychedelic plant medicines are universally placed on the lowest level of research-based public safety indexes. Meanwhile, we see lives decimated by methamphetamine, fentanyl, and the like. This is a time for clarity and precision in the legal system, in our courts, in social services. Luckily, on this issue, civil liberties preservation, public health data, and sensible governance all point us in the same direction. Our proposed resolution can be read on equitableaccesseugene.org. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, John. Our next speakers are Robert W. Baker III, followed by Stefan Struck.
First, I want to say that my name is Robert Baker III. I am here representing the Planning, Policy, and Public Management Program at the University of Oregon, and I want to start by thanking all of our city council members who voted to approve the regulations for missing middle housing. Our city is experiencing a homeless crisis, a homelessness crisis at the moment. We have one of the highest per capita homelessness populations in the country, and I heard a councilwoman bring up what Mr. Corden, Greg Corden, the professor at the University of Washington, said earlier this week, that homelessness is a housing problem. And by incentivizing missing middle housing, we can help reduce the amount of homeless people that are out on our streets. Right now, large portions of the city of Eugene are strictly single-family homes, and considering that our city is bounded in by an urban growth boundary, and we need to grow to, excuse me, serve the growing population, our city needs to find a way to increase the density of our housing supply, especially in those single-family use neighborhoods. Housing is infrastructure, and by building it, we, and incentivizing building of specifically missing middle housing, we can help make the community as a whole better. It will better me because it will help keep the skyrocketing rent prices in the Eugene area at a manageable rate, and it will help everybody else in this room because it will, it will, so sorry, it will get the homeless population housed and in permanent supportive housing and not homeless shelters. That is the ultimate goal that I feel like we should be working for. So I recommend that our council continue to advocate for missing middle housing, continue to support robust regulations that will incentivize private construction of missing middle units like duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. And I also want to propose that the community members here today who have fought against missing middle housing in their neighborhoods, reevaluate their stance and come to terms with the fact that the only way that we solve our pressing homelessness crisis in this city is by increasing our density and welcoming missing middle housing into our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Our next speakers are Stefan Struck, followed by Linda Kelly.
Righteous word, city council. Thank you all for coming down today, and city manager, thank you for listening. I came down today because I really appreciate the fire emergency service workers in our city, and this actually holds a special place for me because I have experienced exactly what it's like to be in a most necessary position to need what's essential services. So I'm just going to walk you through what it's like to be in a building, and yeah, I was 15 years old, living in South Eugene, hanging out with my friend and watching, kicking it old-school, and dude, where's my car? Just, you know, having a good time, and I decided to make a pizza. So went out to the kitchen, put the pizza in the oven, checked back on it a few minutes later, came back again, and I couldn't smell the pizza cooking because there was a pretty bad odor, and I called my friend out, said, "What is this?" And he looked at me absolutely terrified. He said, "That's a gas leak." And I was like, "What? This means nothing to me. Do we open a window?" And he said, "We have to leave the house right now." So we left the house, went across the street, called Eugene Fire Services, and they headed out, but I realized that they might not make it in time. So I got up and I ran back into the house and opened all the windows and got back out again and waited across the street, and it really only took about three minutes for the, you know, fire engine, police cars, ambulance to all show up, shut the block down, and check the house out, and really prevented a really serious disaster. I was told that the entire block could have exploded, and it wouldn't have just killed me and him. There was, my neighbor was a single mom that had a baby that she was home with, and this is a service that really absolutely needs full funding and shouldn't be disrespected by misrepresenting that as any other fund than exactly fully intentioned for the fire services. So please, take that into consideration, that we never know when that time could come. Thank you.
Thank you, Stefan. Our next speakers are Linda Kelly, followed by Molly Babcock.
Good evening, city councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Linda Kelly, and I live in Ward One. I also volunteer with Free 50 Eugene. First, before I go to what I had planned to say, I do want to say that I too did not understand the term "fire service fee," and I agree with a lot of the sentiments that have been put forward, that the name should probably be changed, or the percentage is actually going to fighting fires and supporting those workers be a very much higher percentage. So I just wanted to say that. What I'm really here to talk about also is I'd like to see an increase in the gas supplier tax. I'd like to see it go from 5% to 10%, to raise funds to incentivize home electrification, particularly in moderate and low-income households, and potentially even for small businesses. If we had more money there, we could expand who we can offer incentives to, and I think that could make a big difference. that could make a big difference. The longer we wait to enable a transition to electrification, the more expensive it will be, both in creating the infrastructure and in money spent on increasingly often disaster cleanup events. It's inevitable at this point. Times are changing. Northwest Natural is a member of the Utility Networked Geothermal Collaborative, 24 utilities representing 47% of the nation's natural gas companies. They're working together to explore how to become thermal network providers. Northwest Natural has already completed a scoping study for network geothermal. Washington State has passed two bills, HB 2131 and SB 6039, both of which really advance the possibilities and opportunities for switching to thermal networking as opposed to gas companies. We need our local leaders to step up with moral integrity in this crucial moment in time. We must increase the cost to utilities for supplying a now-known dangerous fuel, and at the same time, use your voice as a city to work with Northwest Natural.
Thank you, Linda. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Molly Babcock, followed by Chris Seaworth.
Hello, Mayor Vinnison, City Council. My name is Molly Babcock. I'm a resident of Ward One and grateful for the opportunity to provide testimony. During my time at the University of Oregon, I completed environmental communication projects with organizations across our city, including E-Web, the UO, Beyond Toxic, the Mackenzie River Trust, and others. Through my experience, I've begun to understand the complex ways that our changing climate is threatening the city we love and how we can help. You all know why our climate is important. In 2018, the city published a report showing the expected climate impacts here in Lane County. These included a 400% increase in wildfire surface area, a 50% stream flow reduction, and near disappearance of snowpack and cascades, all of this by the year 2040. These developments associated with our changing climate undermine our ability to sustain a vibrant community or a thriving economy. While our planet warms, once our planet warms to 1.5 degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels, changes will become more dramatic and less reversible. We are charted to cross that threshold within the next five years. To prevent further catastrophe, every city must do its part to reduce greenhouse gases quickly and significantly. The situation is urgent. The city of Eugene has led a thorough investigation of electrification pathways over the past year. You discovered the robust support for a just renewable energy transition in our community. With the incoming federal administration, existing rebate programs may fall under threat. If we are going to develop a resilient funding mechanism, we need to act fast. Council must generate revenue for low-income residential electrification by increasing the gas supplier tax on Northwest Natural from 5% to 10%. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Our next speakers are Chris Seaworth, followed by David Eigel.
Good evening, mayors, city manager, council. Chris Seaworth, President, Lane Professional Firefighters. I think I might be the last firefighter to speak tonight, and so I just wanted to thank you all very much for kind of listening to everything that we have to say. We really appreciate the time and effort that you put into the work session this last week. It was very evident, based on the questions and the discussion that you all had, that there's a lot of interest and a lot of questions surrounding this, and we understand that there's going to be a lot of hard decisions for all of you to make as you make some of those decisions. As you start to make some of those decisions, we really want to stress the prioritization of long-term funding for our fire department and our members. There's been a lot of statistics thrown out from our members. We've heard them, increased call volume, increased population, not a lot of staffing. The thing to kind of understand with that is, is that stagnation of not increasing our staffing is creating burnout. We've reached that toll with our firefighters, and it's now starting to become a retention issue. As someone mentioned earlier, our retention issue, our retention numbers are hitting roughly around 40% and above. This is for other departments, offering better working conditions, better wages, as well as just walking away from the profession as a whole. The toll that we're putting our firefighters through, it has to stop. We have hit this point where we need resources, we need the support across the board, and as we look at things, as we lose our firefighters, each one of those firefighters has to be replaced. And if we go through and we start looking at the cost-benefit analysis of having to train, recruit, and rehire all over again, that funds, those funds and that financial impact would be far less if we were just to invest in what we have here now. The proposed fire fee estimated at the $2 million benefit for the fire department, as well as the additional $8 million, is a step forward, but it does fall short of addressing our systemic challenges. It may prevent immediate cuts now, but in the long term, we'll probably be back here talking about cuts in the future as well. Right now, we need to prioritize long-term funding, and at 22% funding priority, it just simply isn't enough. We cannot continue to operate without clear direction or adequate funding. I urge the council to make the fire department a long-term priority in their funding source. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next speakers are David Eigel, followed by Robin Bloomgarden.
David Eigel, Ward One. It's time to celebrate our Eugene heritage. Our history includes many good, well-intentioned people. For example, the enormous Brick Methodist Episcopal Church erected on Lamon Street in 1912 bore witness to the major influence of individuals in this community who were descendants of the most hardcore abolitionists and proponents of the rights and interests of the freedmen, including racial integration. This was part of the northern branch of the Methodist Church that separated from the southern branch in the 1840s over slavery. The efforts of this racially integrated northern church alone created a quarter of all institutions of higher education opened in the South after the Civil War to serve the needs of the freedmen. A prominent founding member of the local church was Eugene mayor, Professor Frederick Dunn's father, Francis Berrien Dunn. Professor Dunn's grandparents, after birthing 13 children, said goodbye to their friend, Abraham Lincoln, and moved from Illinois to bleeding Kansas where, for years, they risked their lives working with other abolitionists in the Lawrence area. Their efforts resulted in thousands of slaves being freed. In 1920, there were at least two nationally-recognizing outstanding individuals living in Eugene, Father Edwin O'Hara and Professor Dunn. When Father O'Hara first arrived in Eugene, he intended to establish a Newman Center next to campus, but that was a year and a half into the future. Fortunately, he was immediately invited to participate in the Y-Hut activities sponsored by the YMCA on the UO campus, including having a place to meet with students. Professor Dunn was the faculty sponsor of the YMCA on the UO campus. Unfortunately, today, we have three members of the Eugene City Council who have abused the public's trust by promoting the famatory narratives of our heritage, Greg Evans, Jennifer Yeh, and Matt Keating. I invite them to challenge my work in writing. Council members can provide the links to my three websites to members of the public who are interested. Emily Semple has served to help the homeless. Thank you, Emily. Our tradition of good people helping others has continued, and you're an example of it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next and final speaker is Robin Bloomgarden.
Robin Bloomgarden, Ward Eight. So, councilors, I think that city council does not appreciate how many bad ideas have been foisted onto Bethel over many years. Baxter was horrible from the beginning, and now EPA is cleaning it up. E-Web tried to quietly slip in a hydrogen-natural gas experimental blending facility to supply West Eugene only in 20, West Eugene only in 2022, which was quickly squashed. Highway 99 through Bethel is an eyesore that does nothing to facilitate livability here. The proposed USD Eugene Clean Fuels Transloading Facility in Trainsong is another insult to a small community already suffering from a long-term toxic leaks problem from the railroad yard and dioxin contamination in the one tiny park there. Now, Golden Gardens Natural Area is slated to become a massive sports facility with plastic and rubber playing surfaces that will degrade into the turtle ponds and night lighting shooting upwards and lighting the whole dang neighborhood, as well as confusing any birds flying nearby. Now, there is one new plan that is actually a good idea for Bethel, the metamorphosis of Clear Lake School into a community center to service the whole area with library services, adult education through the Y, Boys and Girls Club, preschool promise, and hopefully, a large gathering space for ABC meetings, et cetera. Thank you for this plan.
Thank you, Robin. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you very much to all of you who took the time to testify. It's very varied and interesting, and I do see the city manager in the queue right away, so I'm going to let you speak.
I can wait until any councilors want to speak. I just, there was a couple of things I wanted to address.
Anybody else in the queue?
Yeah, I'll be in the queue.
Yes, so you can go right now if you want to be in the queue.
That's awesome. Thank you. We're just over 48 hours to Thanksgiving. Oh, mic's on. We're around 48-plus hours to Thanksgiving, and I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in tonight's public comment, for those who come regularly, or for those who might be here for your first time. I'm thankful for your participation in our civic debate. I'm thankful for my family, my two-legged and four-legged friends, council colleagues, coworkers, constituents, and city staff, who often don't get thanked publicly enough. Thank you for your service. And to the first responders who were here, thank you for your service, for your sacrifice, for your dedication to our community's health and well-being. I wish you all a very happy and healthy and safe Thanksgiving holiday weekend.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to the city manager, I might just say something first, and then it may be that you'll expand on it. I just did want to address some of the comments about the fire service fee, and appreciate that the name of this may be confusing, but I do think that it's being misunderstood. And so, I want to speak particularly to the fact that this is a dedicated, this fee would create a dedicated fund that would support the fire services. And $8 million and an additional $2 million, it is a dedicated fund, and it leaves free $8 million still in the general fund to support other city services. So, it is a dedicated, sustainable fund for the fire department that would continue. It creates an additional $10 million to support those services, and the manager could explain that more thoroughly. But I think, I can see you shaking your head, but I, but I think there's a misunderstanding about, about where the money is and where the money is coming from, and the manager can address that.
Thank you, mayor. Actually, I was going to speak to two things. The first one was, this is the second week that Lynn Woodrich has commented that I should withdraw permanently. That's not actually even an option for me to withdraw permanently. We have a timeline that we have to go by to actually respond to, so I just wanted to say that's not an actual option, and I just wanted to make sure you knew that. I wasn't, okay. So, the fire services fee, this isn't the right format to go deeply into it, but the intent always was to do two things. As you asked me to come up with revenue solutions for the general fund, so that's accurate, how do we stabilize all of the services across the general fund? One of the other items I was trying to accomplish is trying to create a sort of utility for fire services that would be a long-term funding source for fire. So, in the first year, we would take the $8 million of fire services out of the general fund, so that's true, but then that money is in a special revenue fund that can't be touched by any other department going forward. So, in the long term, we're starting to build some stability in there that is not as subject to the downsides of being in the property tax fund. So, that's what the intent was, plus $2 million of additional services. I totally understand why people are saying it's just for general fund, but if we called it a city services fee and we just make it a city services fee or a Lucky to Live Here fee, then that doesn't protect and secure that $8 million for fire going forward. And so, that's really what the intent has been, but I understand some of the confusion around it. We're going to continue to talk about this in future work sessions, and you'll have the opportunity to determine what you want to do with that, but that's really what the intent is.
Thank you very much for that. I'm not seeing any other folks commenting. I, again, want to thank the climate folks for coming and speaking to us, and we do have a double, double work session on December 8th on decarbonization and on possible revenue to support climate work. So, appreciate your timely comments, and with that, I think we are adjourned. Thank you so much.